I hereby call the sixteenth day of the third regular session of the twentieth Congress to session. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland, floor leader Harper, Senator Conman, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romano, Senator Orsma, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah, acting Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, we have nine members present.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. And thank you Chairman Orsma for accepting the acting floor leader. So item number fourteen, reading of the Journal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the honor and privilege to act as your floor leader this morning. With that, I shall move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Any objection? If none, we will vote to suspend the reading of the Journal. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item five, presidential communications, on receipt of two communications, and their numbers twenty dash one eighty-nine and twenty dash one ninety.
Assign those. Next item.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. With all due respect to the Chairman of the Pompe Bay delegation and the members of that delegation, I was informed this morning by Chairman Perman of the untimely passing of former President Leo A. Falcon. As we all know, Falcon had served not only FSM but the trust territory and then the FSM, including as president of this nation. So with that, Mr. Speaker, with your permission, I move that we suspend our rules and stand for a moment of silent prayer, remembering our former president and late president Leo A. Falcon in our prayers, and to also remember the families and relatives of the late president. So I move that we stand for a moment of silent prayers, Mr. Speaker.
Any second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded that the rules be suspended and a moment of silent prayer be observed, as stated by Chairman Orsma. Thank you, Chairman Orsma. I know that the Honorable Falcon or His Excellency, President Falcon, has influenced us all in one way or the other. He was a longtime serving member of this Congress, and I'm sure his passing won't go in vain, as we all will carry on some form of influence that he has made on this body. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Member communications, there are none.
Next item.
Item eight, departmental communication, we have one and it's number twenty dash thirty-six.
Speaker.
Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point.
Speaker, thank you. Before I go on with a few remarks on the point of privilege, Speaker, I'd like to join you and our good floor leader, acting floor leader, and on behalf of our Pompe delegation, all of us all, I wish to give our sad, remarks on this sad day for the passing of our former president, Leo A. Falcon. We give sympathies and condolences to the family, especially the Chief of Staff and the surviving members of our former president. And you are right, he has been one of the longest-serving individuals in our government, founding fathers in his capacity, many capacities, as governor, as member of Congress, and president of our nation. It's a sad day, and we give our prayers to the family. Speaker, if I may continue, I wish to introduce some officials who are observing our session this morning, on behalf of our delegation. First, I'd like to introduce for recognition the floor leader of Pompe Bay State Legislature, the Honorable Makari Mikel. Let's give him a round of applause, please. We would like to also give recognition to Senator Daniel Isaac, who is chairman of the Committee of Public Works, Transportation and Communication. Let's give him a round of recognition. Also, wish to introduce a classmate of mine and Senator Leon Moore, who is vice-chairman on the Committee on Land. Let's give him a round of recognition, please. And accompanying them this morning is Walter Solomon, who is the sergeant at arms for the Pompe Bay State Legislature. Let's also give him a round of recognition. I wish to welcome back floor leader Makari Mikel, who played a very significant role in the Pompe Bay delegation to Chuk, the recent visit with the installation or ordination of our peace op. And thank him for the role that he has played in representing Pompe Bay to the event. So we welcome them back. Speaker, if you allow me to continue, also for recognition, I'm getting the list here, Linda Keeling and Leslie Saul with the FSM Congress, these are work-study individuals who are helping us during this session. And if I may have missed out on one, we recognize all the citizens who are observing our session this morning. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. It's always nice and fortunate for us to have members of the state legislative body here, and also citizens observing their Congress with its business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, there are none.
Next item.
Items, item ten, state communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none.
Next item.
Item twelve, municipal or town communications, there are none.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also have a very minor point of privilege before we get to the foreigners or the foreign communication, if I may.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of Senator Vice-Chairman Conman, I, and on behalf of all of us, I wish to introduce person sitting in the gallery observing this morning's session from the state of Chuk, Mr. Usan Valentino. Can we give him a round of applause? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Orsma, for that introduction.
Just a minor point of information with introduction of made by Chairman Panuelo. Of course, point of information on one of the honored guest introduced by the good chairman, that is Chairman Isaac. Is this the same Isaac that I know can sing?
Yes.
Definitely, yeah, the same Isaac who can sing.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Orsma. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item thirteen, foreign government communications, on receipt of numbers twenty dash twenty-eight through twenty dash thirty-one.
Please assign those. Order of the day.
Under order of the day, Mrs. Speaker, on item fourteen, standing committee reports, we have one report, and it's standing committee report number twenty dash fifty-four on congressional resolution number twenty dash seventy-six from your Committee on External Affairs for adoption.
Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning. I move to defer action on the said report.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer action on standing committee report number twenty dash fifty-four. Any objections? Discussion? If none, we will vote on the said motion to suspend standing committee report number twenty dash fifty-four. All in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The Congress has now suspended standing committee report or deferred standing committee report number twenty dash fifty-four. Next item, Chief Clerk? Or any more reports?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, there are none.
Next item.
Item sixteen, assignment of measures and communications, we have a committee referral sheet number twenty dash fifty-three and re-referral sheet number twenty dash zero-seven.
Chairman and members, please take note of the referral sheets. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, Mrs. Speaker, the first bill on the bill calendar is CB number twenty dash one forty-five for second reading. CB number twenty dash one forty-five is a bill for an act to further amend public law number nineteen dash thirty-two, as amended by public laws numbers nineteen dash forty-five, nineteen dash sixty-one, nineteen dash eighty-three, nineteen dash ninety-five, and nineteen dash one twenty-two by amending sections one and nine thereof to the appropriate amount of eight hundred thousand dollars from the capital and human resources development for the state of Koshai infrastructure priority project funding and for other purposes.
Short recess. We're still on CB number twenty dash one forty-five for second reading.
Speaker.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and all that are serving our session this morning. That's including those who are actually looking, seeing us on live streaming. Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to pass on second and final reading on the said bill, that is actually CB twenty dash one forty-five. So moved, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number twenty dash one forty-five. Discussion? If there are no objections, we will vote by roll call of the delegation.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritas. State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wally.
Yes, two times.
State of Yap, Chairman Orsma. Chairman Orsma. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states, forty-four.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty dash one forty-five. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one forty-eight for second reading, CB number twenty dash one forty-eight. It's a bill for an act to further amend public law number nineteen dash fifty-four as amended by public laws numbers nineteen dash sixty-two, nineteen dash seventy-five, nineteen dash seventy-nine, nineteen dash ninety-nine, nineteen dash one hundred nineteen, nineteen dash one twenty-nine, nineteen dash one thirty-six, nineteen dash one forty-four, nineteen dash one seventy-three, twenty dash four, and twenty dash fifty-six by amending section five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Anybody?
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma.
I move for a short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Orsma, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. With all due respect, I move to defer actions on CB number twenty dash one forty-eight, CB number twenty dash one forty-nine, and CB number twenty dash one fifty. All three are up for second reading to tomorrow's calendar. I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer action on CB number twenty dash one forty-eight, twenty dash one forty-nine, and twenty dash one fifty. Discussion?
Question.
If no objection, question has been called for. We will now vote on deferring action on CB number twenty dash one forty-eight, twenty dash one forty-nine, and twenty dash one fifty. All in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash one forty-eight, twenty dash one forty-nine, and twenty dash one fifty are all deferred to the next calendar day. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item nineteen, resolution calendar, there are none.
Short recess.
Short recess. We are now back to item number nineteen, eighteen. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to members. Motion to withdraw, CB number one fifty-four, place it on today's calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash one fifty-four be placed on today's calendar for action.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma, you have the floor.
Just so we are within our rules of procedure, I move that the rules that require report to be attached to bills and resolution and any other section of our rules, including paragraphs that may impede our actions, be suspended.
It's been moved and seconded that any rules that may impede our action on the said bill be suspended. Any objections? If none, we will vote on the said motion to suspend the rules. All in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. Chairman Figuere.
I yield to Chairman Romolo.
Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Move for passage of CB number one fifty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash one fifty-four be adopted on first reading. Discussion? If no discussion, debate is now closed. We will vote by roll call of members.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuere, Senator Coland, floor leader Harper, Senator Conman, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo.
Aye.
Senator Perman, Senator Romano, Senator Orsma, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah, acting Speaker Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members, forty-four.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number twenty dash one fifty-four. Next bill.
Speaker, point of privilege.
Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, thank you for giving me the floor again to introduce. When I was introducing the work-study students, I omitted two of them. I kindly ask that we recognize Yolanda and Selma Walto. Both of them are also work-study students, helping with our library work here at the Congress. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for those introductions. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item nineteen, resolution calendar, there are none.
Next item.
Item twenty, introduction of bills and resolutions.
Chairman and members, if you have any bills or resolutions to introduce, please pass them forward. Next item.
Item twenty-one, miscellaneous communications, there are none.
Next item.
Item twenty-two, miscellaneous business.
Any miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker. Just wanted to state on record that the district I represent, District Number One, Pompe, send their deepest condolences to the families of the late Falcon, too. And if I still have the floor, Mr. Speaker, I want to share to all members my disappointment of the Department of Justice, hoping that this twenty-day session will take care of that social security matters, especially the seven amendments that was proposed. We've been requesting their office to make sure that they send it up and also to come to the hearings, and so far, we've find out that they're off island. During session, they're not here, but they're off island. I guess whatever off island is more important than our sessions. You know, business cannot be done when all the departments are not here for our oversight hearings. So I'm hoping if we're going to have a next special session or the regular session in May, they're here to provide informations that needed, because social security issues is not something that we really wanted to keep on changing, or because it's a very unpopular issue. So I'm hoping next time, as a speaker, you know, when, do, I don't know how we do it, do we send them a letter for our disappointments? And another disappointment is all the grants that we've been getting. And I know we've been complaining about the grants coming in in millions, and seems like these grants are just to pay for salaries and wages and travels, but instead of the real outcome. So what I was thinking about, taking action instead of, if they're not going to provide stats and information needed, then I would recommend that we disapprove it. But if I do that, lots of people will not get paid. So I'm going to need help from other members on what we should be doing and really taking actions, because of course, these are grants that is coming in, and to me, we're not really utilizing them. So it's a concern, and it's a disappointment that I want to share with all members. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Romolo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to also state on record that, and that there was a report I signed after the hearing, the oversight hearing, per the bill that I was earlier in then to withdraw. But I believe, because our legal staff is new, and I believe it has not been circulated, but there was a report that after the hearing that was compiled by the staff, so may I ask that we pardon the issue that the report didn't make it to everybody for, and to the chamber for adoption of their board. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. I'm sure that if it has been circulated, it will probably be in our tomorrow's agenda. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, thank you. Just information for members that I want to share, yesterday during our JCRB meeting at the central facilities, a copy of the GAO report was distributed to members. It's fifty-one pages, and this is based on the recent visit by the GAO to the FSM. They held substantive meetings with every level of our government, and we understand that FSM input and response is being worked on, and we hope that we don't miss the opportunity to provide those comments before this document becomes official and is distributed to the members of the U.S. Congress and officials. So I merely want to share that and say that electronic version of the report is with us, and I can provide it to the chief clerk to share it with the members of Congress, all of us. And there is electronic version, those who prefer hard copies, it can be printed, I believe, but it's fifty-one pages. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, with the report on the GAO report. I'm kind of surprised that the office of the speaker has not seen the report either. Any other miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Orsma.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. In light of the recent passing of our former president, Leo A. Falcon, Falcon, I'm sure that the state of Yap leadership will be sending condolences letter to the appropriate family members and individuals and government officials. But on the, on, just, as the event just happened last night, I wish to convey on behalf of the people of the state of Yap and our leadership, our condolences to the family and friends, and to the government for the passing of our president Falcon. As an individual that preceded, no, succeeded the president, it was very difficult as a, to walk in the shoes of that individual. I try hard to see if I can copy the and continue the works that he had started. Unfortunately, I was not capable of providing the same leadership and the same programs that the late President Falcon had started. I found the office when I was elected, chased out of the thirteenth Congress to serve in that office in good shape, and so it was very, not difficult for me to, to take over the helm of the government and continue to work as hard as I could to, to at least come close to what the late president had performed. So of course, our sympathy and condolences. On the issue raised by Chairman Perman, I think part of the problem, and we need to really look at these issues, we've been talking about these federal programs for ages, ever since I joined Congress, and I don't mean that it was in the medieval time that I joined Congress, but it's been some time. We talk about these issues of the federal programs funding personnel, and it continues. So in the wisdom of past Congress, we adopted a resolution to decentralize as much as possible the National Department of Health. the National Department of Health and Social Affairs, as well as, I believe, the Department of Education, to move the personnel to the states where the programs are implemented and to reduce the number of positions funded by these federal programs international government. As stated by the good chairman, that is not the case. When we look at the federal programs, much of the grants are spent here at the national government, and a good, a good portion of the grants are also spent on personnel. So I, I hope that this Congress not only talk about these things, but to do some things. I was watching a show recently where the host of the show stated that the problem with the US government and the leadership of the US government is that they need leaders with characters and courage to stand up, to be bold, to stand up, and say things and do things that will improve the US government. We have heard of the phrase new normal. I think we need to take heed of that and see where we can be bold, courageous, and with the characters to, to right the wrong and to, to improve the services of the government to serve our people. So I hope we don't just talk, but we walk the talk, as the late President Leo A. Falcon always referred to, walk the talk. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Usmal. Any more miscellaneous business? If none, Chief Clerk, next item.
Item twenty-three, announcements.
Chairman Wali.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just to remind everyone that your Committee on External Affairs will have a meeting today at one with the department in the hearing room regarding grants and any issues relating to the department. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Wali. Members, take note. Chairman Figueroa. Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, right after XF, your Committee of Health and Social Affairs will have another one, that's the bill on the pharmaceutical. So yes, today at, no? Short recess.
Short recess. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Sorry, I'll take that back. It's historic preservation archives. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Chairman Romolo.
No announcement.
Chairman Panwelo.
Speaker, thank you. Speaker, I wish to announce to members that tomorrow I am inviting the student of the month, students, to the committee room from twelve to one-thirty, and these are student of the month from ECE to eighth grade with Colonial Elementary School and Omine Elementary School. The principals are accompanying them and maybe chaperones. During the lunch, Speaker, hosting lunch for the students, there's probably twenty-two to twenty-five of them, including their teachers, and we'll be awarding their certificates and giving them interactive talk. I welcome members who wish to join the event to make it fun and interact with the students, especially our chairman of E. And Speaker, you're welcome to join. It's just an event that will give them a bit of importance to feel that they're part of the government, they're part of citizens of this nation. I plan to do this with all the schools, and I'm starting with Colonial and Omine Schools tomorrow, and thank you for allowing the use of our committee room for this event. It'll be an hour and a half, and I plan to invite them a little early, if we are still in session, to introduce them, and then they can go up and have the lunch with myself and the members who wish to join. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panwelo, for doing that for the kids. It's going to be an extra special Valentine's Day for them. Chairman Usmal, any announcements on?
My memory back here, I believe the Committee on Education will have a continue, continues, continue its oversight hearing this after, tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock after the program hosted by Chairman Panwelo, that we in the hearing room to oversight hearing on issues pertaining to education to wrap up our oversight hearings with the department. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Usmal. Members, take note. Senator Neff. Aritos, Senator Aritos. Senator Conman.
No announcement, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that this Congress stands in recess until tomorrow at ten o'clock in the morning.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until ten AM tomorrow. Any objections? If none, we will vote. All in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until ten AM tomorrow morning.